Wait. Just wait a little bit longer. See if anybody else shows up. I don't anticipate many people will. He's recording, yes. Again. People are not.
No. The pandemic.
Okay, so I see what's happening. I think it's fair to go ahead and get started now. And so I said, we're going to start with chapters eleven and twelve. And this basically just can be going through the outlines associated with these chapters. I like making them from the content. So we can look at it in a more defined way. Not that it's not defined in study sheet, but. I feel like it's more defined looking at it in a system of things and to work through in an outline setting. And that's maybe just me, but whatever. So. Let's start with chapter eleven, shall we? So chapter eleven, that was dealing with controlling microbes. So uh, so chapter eleven. Control. Um, so uh, no, not anything surprising there when we're talking about that. Controlling the actual microbes on surfaces, uh, whether it's living surfaces or otherwise. And we learned about two, um, this is kind of annoying if it keeps closing. Learned about two, um. Different ways to look at it, right? Whether you're sterilizing or you're not sterilizing, basically. And so, um, when you're sterilizing something, you're killing all of the organisms there. So we'll just go ahead and. So it's sterile and we know that that is killing all. Uh, the next one would be. I'm looking at as not killing all of them, basically just wording it that way. So if we're not killing everything, so endosporas usually is what we're not killing, but it could be anything. Those four lives. So when that happens, if that is on a um, living. Surface or a non-living surface. So it's on living, we're calling it a sepsis or antisepsis. And then if we're talking about it being on a non-living, uh, this is uh, gonna be talking about disinfection. Dissepsis is a term, disinfection, sterile sterilization. That's dealing with that. Um, so like I said, um, endosporas living or anything living at all surviving. If anything is surviving at all. What are you doing? Anyways, um. He's not in here with me, I know he's doing something probably even worse, so. Um, he's very naughty boy. So so anyways, uh, antisepsis, he's very young, he's still a puppy, basically. Um, and then disinfection. So if we're trying to get rid of something, though, whether we're getting rid of it and resulting in sterilization or not. The means by which we are doing, if we are doing it by mechanical means, then that is going to be decontamination. Okay, so the, these are the concepts underlying all of these mechanisms that we're going to be going through. Um, breaking this down into the different various types of um, microbial control. That we have laid out within chapter eleven. So that is, that's our building, the building point. So achieving stability or not. And if you're not, are you um, treating on a living surface or a non-living surface? Or if you're treating something, are you doing it mechanically or otherwise? And if it's mechanical, then that's decontamination. So those are the four major terms that we get introduced to first. Um, at least on the study sheet and as we're becoming familiar with how this stuff works. I'm sure you guys don't need me to go over microbostatic and microbicidal. I'm guessing that you understand that cytal being killed, static being. You know, um, stalling growth somehow inhibiting growth, um, preventing growth. Anything like that at all, but not killing. And a lot of this stuff. The goal of it is um, gonna be if we're killing something, one of the easiest ways you can kill something is by denaturing the proteins in it. There's a lot of different ways it can be nature of proteins, which we talked about in this chapter. It could be through chemical use or through heat use. Um, you know, pH change and all sorts of things. But um, either way, that's one of the best targets for a lot of this stuff. So if we're targeting, um. Proteins. And how would that work? Um, we're basically looking at the original form. Is our uh, native state. This is the functioning protein. And then, um. The uh, if you're using anything to cease the functioning of that protein, um, then we're converting it into a form that no longer works. Whether it's completely unfolded or we're just changing the shape slightly, it doesn't really matter. If that protein can't work anymore, then um, that is going to be called denatured. So we're gonna change or use a little triangle to represent change because it's just easier. Um, so change the protein structure. And that will mean it can't function anymore and loses that function. A lot of these um, methods that we are looking at also had to be tested at some point. To determine their efficacy, their ability to achieve sterilization or um. Uh, sterilization or disinfection, whatever it is. Uh, so one of the things that they put a lot of these methods through will be determining the thermal death time versus the thermal death point. Two different aspects of this, right? So um. Thermal death. So if we're looking for the time. Um, that's how much time, how long it takes to kill something, um, to kill everything in that sample. Um, at a specific temperature. So however long at a specific temp. And then the uh, thermal death point. Is um. Um, the temp. Yes, I don't know where we word this, I hope this doesn't erase when I use it this way. Um, okay, so looking for the temp that when we expose it for. What are we doing now? Because buddy, this isn't right either. Whoa. Okay, sorry, I don't know what y'all screen did, but mine just went nuts, okay? Anyways, um, the temp uh, at uh, ten minutes. That you'll allow you to kill everything. So the whole goal here is to kill everything. So what temp for ten minutes is the is the point? Um, and then how long I've known specific temp is the thermal death time. So that's what those are referring to, so um. On any point. Okay, uh, so how long, everyone say before we get into these? I think so, are you just gonna stand here? All right, let's scroll down a little bit. All right, so let's get into the chapter twelve outline and try to fit it, see if I can fit it on here. But um. I don't know, would you, is it easier for you guys if I scroll it or if I make separate pages? I don't know what's easier for you guys.
I kind of like the separate pages. But I'm trying to, I'm trying to follow you when you on the same page, it's kind of hard personally.
Yeah, it's fine, I can do the separate pages if nobody else cares, we'll just do it that way. Um, all right, all right. I'm gonna figure out how, I don't remember how I started the second page. Oh my gosh, it's different on my computer than it is on the other computer, okay? All right, so here's a second page so you guys can switch between these pages. That can be done also when you guys access this later on, if you want to access it later on. And I'll get the link to that, but anyway, so getting into chapter twelve or sorry, eleven. Chapter eleven, um, and breaking down the different ways we can approach microbial control. Uh, we can basically divide it into three main sections. Physical. Uh, mechanical. And then chemical. Alrighty, um, whenever we are talking about mechanical. So it's just like we were saying with decontamination. I said, oh no, when you're removing something mechanically, you know, um. Why is that iPad seems so like sensitive when I use it in other situations? And when you're doing something mechanically, you know, that's decontamination. Well, what does mechanical mean exactly? It's like when you are scrubbing, so even if you were to take a brush, even just like a hairbrush or anything. And literally scrub on your skin with that brush, it's gonna remove some microbes. It might not be super effective at cleaning, but just by itself, but uh, that would be mechanical removal. So that's what we're talking about, though, actually physically removing the uh, microbes from on there. Now I know that makes you want to say, well, isn't that physical? Not so much as physical is affecting the actual cells physically um, with some sort of treatment. Whereas mechanical, we are mechanically removing the cells. Um, or viruses, for example. And then chemical actually treating them with a chemical that's gonna react somehow with the cell structure. So that's kind of the difference. So what was the main example that we had for mechanical? Uh, we really only talked about one, I believe, which was filtration.
Filtration.
Yes, so with filtration, um. We are li- literally have holes in some sort of membrane or something. And based on how big those holes are, we maybe be able to eliminate anything. So as far as us tracking, um, whether or not something can sterilize or not. Uh, I'm gonna put a plus with a circle if it can, it is capable of it. So if we have small enough pores on our filters, you could potentially sterilize. What do we usually treat with filters? We're gonna be um, looking at treating fluids or uh, like air, right? Like HEPA filters, um, just so that we know how they're used typically. So that's the mechanical one and that's the only aspect of it that we need to know, so that's kind of easy. So we'll move on next to physical. Uh, we can really divide physical into two categories, I can go over here so I have some more space. And then here, okay, into into two sections for this. And that's going to be the heat section. And the other one is going to be the radiation. Were there other ones that we talked about that are mentioned in the study sheet? Yes, I'll probably know that they exist, but you're probably aware of most of them. Um, if you know, similar to heat, we would have cold, it's not very good for sterilization and doesn't really, it's inhibits growth while things are frozen, but. It's not that good at killing anything. Um, desiccation to drying things out. Um, that was one, let's see, have the list up here. An osmotic pressure, packing things in salt, which was something that we had talked about previously as well. Um, and there was one other, oh, ultrasonic waves, which we really didn't talk about at all. Um, I did that in my last, I said my last lab that I worked in, but um, long, long, long time ago when I worked at a research lab in OU. Um, I used ultrasonic waves to break open bacterial cells. But you don't see it a whole lot, um, let's see, sonication, which is what they call it, uh, uh, medical instruments, but. So those are, they still fall under this realm and I'll like, I'll list them out here at the side so we don't forget that they exist, but I'm not gonna go into depth on those. So cold, um, we put sound for ultrasonic, even though it's. Um, a little bit different. And just wanna write it all out, uh, cold sound, uh, drying, desiccation. And then osmotic pressure, so um, I say salt, but it could be sugar, sugar, so they're all. For that, so um, strong uh. Levels of salt or sugar can draw moisture out of the cells and help with that. So any of that can be included within physical as well. Um, but we're not gonna get into the details, so I'm not putting them in this flow chart. Because obviously like, know that they exist and that they are a thing, but I'm not gonna ask you any in-depth questions about them. So, um, heat though, and radiation, I do expect you to know a little bit about how these are going to work. As um, you know, a means to control microbes. So first, starting out with heat, we have two different ways that you can approach this one. Just to write up something like this. Um, let's just say, uh, using dry heat or moist heat. So whether you're introducing water with it or not, introducing water um, helps to uh. Coagulate proteins faster, so you need to be at a lower temperature. Um, for less time if you're introducing it with water, so um, water. Helps. Coagulate, which we know that just means sticking it together, right? Pumping them together, they can't work if they're like that, um, protein. Alright, so um. And put circles around these so we can see them more clearly. We'll do the same thing for filter over here. Dry, and then once I can make little notes and still see it, okay? So uh, we have examples for each of these categories. The dry, the two that we really talked about um, the most. We have uh, dry ovens. Which are quite a lot like the ovens that you use at home. So you'll be baking your glassware or whatever it is for hours in a dry oven at that temperature. And you can sterilize using that mechanism if it is done appropriately. Um, so ovens, so this is one specific one, we can say this can sterilize if done appropriately. Um, another one which we use in um, lab. Incineration, so fire burning something to ash. And this also, if used appropriately, can sterilize. So dry, looking pretty good, the only problem is at lower temperatures for the dry. Of course, you have to expose it for a very, very long time. And if you are incinerating something, you're risking damaging things like plastic and stuff that are not very heat resistant. Um, so would we prefer moist? Probably, uh, it's more effective at lower temperatures, shorter times. That's great, what would the problem be with moist um, exposure though? Now, uh, the problem with that, of course, could be rust. So if you have something that is prone to being degraded by rust, then you might not want to expose it um, to moist situation. Um, to water. And uh, another problem with it is you have to get that hot moisture into the inside of whatever it is. If you're trying to sterilize inside or treat inside of something. So um, if you can't get inside of it, then it doesn't work effectively as a control mechanism. So there are problems with that. Um, that you can utilize the dry heat to deal with that a little bit better. If you can't approach it through the moist mechanisms. So some examples that we have for the moist. Um, I have three that I would say I would definitely be aware of these three. Okay, so uh, boiling. Uh, boiling is great, we get up to, you know, a hundred degrees Celsius at least. And it can kill most vegetative microbes, it's not going to kill endosporas. So it is not going to sterilize, so we'll do this. Um, and remark down here, doesn't kill. Endosporas, so that's the problem, that's why it doesn't sterilize. Um, the next one I would say is, let's go ahead and put pasteurization. I'm gonna put just pasteurize. I did not spell that right, I'm like looking at it, it's like bothering me so bad right now, sorry. Um, how about this, how about this? There you go. Um. Alright, so. Uh. Well, whatever, there it is, I don't know why I can't click on it anymore, but I can. So there's pasteurization, um, pasteurization has the same problem. Where uh, it does not kill endosporas either. This is alternating temperatures between cool and hot, short amounts of time at hot. And then alternating to cool to let it cool down and then just switching back and forth to try to eliminate um, pathogens that way. Absolutely are not going to eliminate all of the pathogens um, in order to, like, one of the things we do uh, is pasteurize our milk. And we know that that goes bad really quickly. If it was sterile, it would last essentially forever once you sealed it up. But now, we know that it is not sterile, so that's one way you can remind yourself that pasteurization is not gonna sterilize. Um, but yeah. No sterilization here. Anyways, alright, and then the um, last one is our good old friend, the autoclave. Um, and this one, if we are maintaining the correct temperatures, we are um, also going to include fresherization and steam, so all three. Um, temp. Pressure. And steam, and all of these are gonna work together to achieve sterilization. So um, done correctly, this can also sterilize. And it's only gonna be like fifteen to twenty minutes at a hundred and twenty-one degrees Celsius, uh, fifteen PSI. And um, that's, that's all you would need in order to completely sterilize some, which is quite impressive. Especially when comparing it to like the oven where you're gonna be sitting there for like four hours. So it's pretty useful there, so those are our heat ones, okay? We took up quite a lot of space with that, that's all right. The next ones that we have don't take up um, too much space, so uh, that's gonna be radiation. So that's everything for heat, now for radiation, the other physical that I'd be aware of, uh, we're gonna have. Non. Ionizing. Versus. Ionizing. Um, and these, we can kind of assess on their own without having to split it up, um, but both of these. Can sterilize if used appropriately. It takes a little bit more prolonged exposure to the non-ionizing. Um, but they can sterilize in the right settings. Um, if you're like, for example, trying to sterilize the surface of something, you can use non-ionizing. Now remember, non-ionizing, that's gonna include things like ultraviolet radiation. For ionizing, here we are talking about um, gamma radiation and X-ray. Radiation, and there's other ones cathode rays and stuff like that. But this stuff's um, going to be actually injecting um, excited, you know, electrons from. Uh, within your molecules of your body, you're exposed to the radiation, it ejects your electrons and creates ions, so that's how it's ionizing. Um, so this ejects. Ejects electrons, um, and then that can cause damage, it is very penetrating. It can go through uh, pretty heavy surfaces, even including lead, if you're young with strong enough um, rays. Now, when we are doing an X-ray of someone's body, um, that's still very, very low levels of X-ray exposure. And we read, we wear the lead aprons um, to protect from that. But if you get high enough levels of things like gamma radiation, there's no amount of anything that's going to protect you from that sort of radiation. So it can penetrate um. Entire like surfaces through walls and through um. You know, the outer coatings of things to get deep inside of whatever you're looking at. So we can, we can actually um, sterilize through entire uh, like a chicken breast. You know, we can sterilize that entire thing by irradiating it that way and it can sterilize through the tissue itself, which is pretty impressive. They call that cold sterilization. Alright, anyways, UV radiation, we know about this, um, just from being exposed to UV rays, can it penetrate? Not, not really, um, so this uh, can't. So that's the limiting, that's a limiting factor with that, might not be as useful, but it is gonna be less damaging. It does create um, your DNA bases to bind next to each other as opposed to across their match. Um, on the other strand, so that is what causes the mutations and then leads to death of the organism. So it's not quite as damaging as what we see with ionizing, so that's the difference with those there. Um, so that's it for physical, I'm gonna go ahead and move on to chemical, physical and mechanical, so we're gonna move on to chemical. Um, this more or less, I have this listed like a list, because putting it out in uh, the same kind of flow chart was just too much. So uh, first, we'll start off with um, halogens. With the halogens, um, here we're really concerned more about things like chlorine. Fluorine, fluoride, um, and iodine, right? And that's what we talk about the most, but especially with the chlorine and the iodine. Um, this can absolutely be sterilizing if it is used appropriately. So I'm not gonna get too much into the details of that, because that's pretty much what you need to know. Iodine um, and chlorine, primarily, they're going to be able to sterilize if used appropriately, right? Concentrations and that sort of stuff. Um, so this does include bleach, for example. Number two, some bleach. Right, number two, um. Alright, number two, um we have the phenolics and phenol. Phenol is pretty uh toxic and damaging to tissues, so we don't really use it, especially on or near people anymore. It's carbolic acid, and Lister used that to uh treat his uh like operating suites and stuff. But anyways, uh phenolics. This we do use. Um this will include things like. Triclozan. And uh chlorhexidine. Chlorhexidine is present in a lot of like skin prep solutions. We can use it to prep um for IVs. Um for blood donation or um even use in surgical scrub, which is probably what people know it best for. As Hiboclenz. Um so yeah, so phenolics, these do not sterilize. Um number three. The alcohols. See if you can see them better. Alcohols. Okay, more famously for us than here for these will be um. Isopropyl. And ethanol, right? That's what we definitely see the most of in the medical field. Um anyways, these guys work best at uh seventy percent. And around there. Um this is because the, the water. That thirty percent um helps coagulate. Proteins. Um alcohols are pretty effective at um disrupting. The membranes and the cell walls. Uh but does it sterilize? Uh no, these guys don't sterilize. Okay, number four, uh we have the oxidizing compounds. This is going to include, for you guys', you know, purposes, it's gonna be uh hydrogen peroxide. And if you guys ever have an issue with remembering the formula for it, it's literally, there's a hydrogen per oxygen oxide. So there's H two O two, so they match up in number. So H two O two is hydrogen peroxide. Um you can use this, like we would get over the counter three percent formulation uh on wounds as a mouthwash. Even um just, you know, cleaning um skin and even surfaces as well, but. Um you can have this at concentrated values like thirty-five percent and stuff like that. That can be used to sterilize things as well as creating vapor, vaporizing it, and that can sterilize too. So this one. Um did I put a hold on drug? This is just going to find, this can sterilize. If it's done properly. And then we have. Sorry, I just like realized I wrote more on the bottom of this. I was like, well, I shouldn't have written so big. Uh anyways, whatever, we have surfactants. A surfactant is probably something that you guys are are familiar with. A surfactant, um again. We would say detergents fall into this category. You can think of them as the same thing. That's okay. And then what these guys do with their little sudzing action is break up the membranes. So these disrupt. Membranes. With their amphotagic. Molecules. Okay, um. Anyways, uh so that's how they work, and I think that's pretty much what we would need to know about them. Um an example of that will be our. Quadrinary. Ammonium compounds. Um that's gonna have ammonium typically, just think of that as being positive type of thing. It's a basic. Typically, um but yes, it's going to be a positive charge. And then it's also going to have um those long chain tails. Like we have in our own lipid bilayer. So that's how they work and how they function, how they stick in between the molecules of the lipid bilayer. Um we call it interpolating, but ripping it apart by sticking in between those molecules. Um this is not going to be sterilizing, but we can use this in combination with other things like chlorhexidine. Where we have surgical scrub, scrub, we know there's, you know, detergent in there. You scrub it and it gets all foamy, so that is. On the mechanical, or the actual scrubbing itself. Um but we're gonna have two chemical aspects there. The phenolic, the chlorhexidine, as well as the detergent. For the quadrinary ammonia, that's causing that detergent aspect that way. So it's pretty effective. Um anyways. And let's see, let's see, let's see. The next one I have is, we're almost done. We have the aldehydes. This can be um. Glutaldehyde, uh it can be um formaldehyde. And then it could be um, I don't, I don't know how to say this word, and I always mess it up when I try to say. Um. Ortho, phthaldehyde, yes. LPA, okay. So okay, ortho, phthaldehyde, OPA. Um this one does not sterilize, but I'm, I'm pretty sure formaldehyde can, but I know for sure glutaldehyde can. So we'll just go ahead and include that. Um just so we're aware of it. But OPA, it's safer, it's not as toxic. And um it's gonna be easier to use, but it isn't going to be able to sterilize, so that kind of sense. But yeah. And next one wi- would be. Number seven, um. Ethylene oxide. It's a gas. And you can fill entire rooms with it and create what they would call a chemi-clave. Like an autoclave, but with chemicals. Um and then sterilize everything in it. The problem with it is that it is explosive. So it's not, it's not like super user friendly. It's pretty toxic, it's explosive. Yeah, so you can fill a whole room and sterilize everything in it, but yeah, it's not super safe. So that can sterilize. There are other types of gases um as well that aren't quite as dangerous, but uh we don't need to worry about that, so. Number eight that I have on here is the last one, which is the acids and the alkali. So we can think of those acids and bases. So these are obviously going to be dealing with the pH. And this can um disrupt the function of those proteins since they depend so heavily on. Uh their hydrogen bonds, so we're gonna disrupt. H bonds. Of proteins. So that will lead to denaturation, so they can't work. Um depending on how strong your acid or your base is. You could technically sterilize, but it really depends on what formula we're talking about and and all that, so. Um it, that really depends. But yeah, that's, so that's everything. That's all of our um. Physical, mechanical, and chemical things that chapter eleven taught us about. So I do believe that's it. So uh before we move on to chapter twelve, does anybody have any questions about any of this stuff that we've gone over? Alright, uh. Let's go on to another page. This is gonna be where we start working on chapter twelve, and this is gonna be our antibiotics and antimicrobial medications. So remember that when we're talking about antimicrobial medications. We are referring, or the drugs, we're referring to chemotherapy, so it's just chemicals that you're treating a disease with. That's chemotherapy, it's not always cancer. So um so this will be chapter twelve. Antimicrobial drugs. Or chemotherapeutics. Okay. Uh we had, let's see, we had five different ways um that our antibiotics. Could attack our bacterial cells. So yeah, first thing, first things first. Um bacteria. Uh these are always gonna be treated with antibiotics. So this goes both ways, right? So bacteria are treated with antibiotics, antibiotics treat bacteria. Antibiotics don't treat viral infections or anything else. Um antibiotics will treat for bacteria. If I talk about antimicrobials, then we can talk about all of the microbes, antibiotics, biotic bacteria. Alright, so the five different ways that uh we can deal with our bacteria. We have attacking the cell wall, attacking, so inhibiting synthesis or breaking down the cell wall. We have affecting protein. Synthesis. We can affect the folic acid. Synthesis pathway. Uh we can affect the cell, sorry, I supposed to say cell membrane. Um and then we can uh affect nucleic acid synthesis. Alright, so let's go through our examples. We actually have. I'm gonna go through each of these. Uh for the cell wall, number one, the sylums, our specific example was. Penicillin, but anything that is derived from that. Sylums. Uh we also had beta-lactam-based drugs in general, beta-lactam. Drugs. Um and that's a pretty vague statement, but the reason I'm including it is because I want you to be aware of the importance of the beta-lactam ring. In um treating bacteria via cell wall, inhibiting cell wall synthesis or something. So the beta-lactam ring, it's just a structure. The chemical structure, you don't need to recognize it. Just know that there is a thing called a beta-lactam ring that is found in drugs. That inhibits cell wall synthesis. Okay, so beta-lactams, they have the beta-lactam rings. Uh number three, I have these cephalosporins. Um and these tend to be groups, but these also have a beta-lactam ring, which is different from the sylums and the typical beta-lactams. And then for the fourth group that uh you should be aware of. Um in the cell wall area would be the carbapenins. Remember, that's our last line of defense drug. We did mention in the lecture a few others. Um it's not gonna square, so we'll see this. Uh which for vancomycin and bacitracin, bacitracin is found in triple antibiotic cream. Um and then uh vancomycin, uh reason I bring that up is cuz in the next group. And the protein synthesis, most of the mycins affect protein synthesis, not vancomycin, so. That is one to kind of be aware of. I feel like knowledge-wise, it's not on your study sheet, but just, and I'm not, you know, I'm just. It's a good thing to know, is what I'm trying to say. Um. Okay, so that's fine. Yes. Alright, so that is the four basic um groups or classes or. Even antibiotics themselves that I would be specifically aware of for the exam for the cell wall synthesis inhibitors, alright? So uh that's, there's four of these. I'm gonna put a note at the side, come back to that in a moment. Um for stuff that affects the protein synthesis, usually affects the function of the ribosomes themselves. So that's a good thing to be aware of. Remember, that is the machinery that helps build proteins. Um from messenger RNA that's copied from the gene and all that. So uh here we have amino glycosides. That's a group. Um that uh you don't really need to know the structure of them, but it would include things like streptomycin. Um next, tetra. Cyclin and glycyl cyclin, they're in the same group together. Tetra and. Glycyl cyclin. And then, that's not the next number. Okay, and then number three, I have the mycins in general, so all the rest of. The mycins. So you might say, well, I thought that the mycins fell in with the amino glycosides. Not necessarily. Some of the mycins. Are considered macrolides. You don't have to know that with a test. But that's why I have mycins separate from amino glycosides. Some mycins fall into amino glycosides, some of them fall into the macrolides, and you don't need to know which ones. So, so I just know amino glycosides for sure in proteins. And most of the mycins gonna be in proteins, even if they're not all amino glycosides. Okay. Uh so that's basically three groups that you would have to know for that one. Next is our folic acid. Um this one's, I feel like, even, even easier. These are going to be anything with. Sulfur, sulfur, sulfate. So sulfur drugs and trimethoprim. This is the one that I always said is like the stinky bear. Uh because we've got sulfur, that stinks, and methane, methane itself would stink if you were just smelling by itself. Um so that's how I, I kinda remember those. Um so those are the stinky groups. If you, if you see one of those names out there as one of your choices, then you should think the stinky ones fall with. Folic acid. So this could be our number one, and this could be our number two, and that's the most you would need to know for those. Um that'll be uh two, you need to know for folic acid. Alright, the next one, easy one, cell membrane. The only one you need to know for this one. Polymixins. That's it. I just wanted to say for that one. So just that one. Um I will say this, polymixin and then bacitracin back at our cell wall. And in the protein, we have neomycin. That's all neosporin, triple antibiotic cream, that's the three that are in there. So we have three targets there in your triple antibiotic cream. Pretty neat stuff when you understand about how that works. Anyways, um that's it for cell membrane. Then next, we have the nucleic acids. And if you guys remember for this one, we are talking about the group that is called the. And um in addition to knowing that group, I would ask that you guys also are aware of the drugs that end in. Phloxacin, they are fluoroquinolones, to be clear, but definitely know that. That's um sub, sub, I don't know what the word is, suffix, so that's not a word, is it? Anyways, the ending, that word, um the ending is according to. That will be the nucleic acid inhibitor, okay? Even if it is a fluoroquinolone, no phloxacin. So uh anyway, number one and number two that you need to know for that one. So there's two things you would need to know for this one. So for the antibiotics. The uh if you can remember, cell wall. Wall, protein. Folic acid. Membrane. And then nucleic acid, like DNA or RNA. Alright, so if you can remember those five. And if you can try to remember that in, in that specific order, then you can remember, you need to know four, three, two, one, and two. Terms associated with those um to help keep, you know, those in track in your mind. So that's our four, three, two, one, two for the bacteria. Um yeah, let's make a new page. Let's take, make a new page for the next one. So we went to the antivirals. So I'll say up here at the top, just remind us, bacteria. That was our four, three, two, one, two. So it was our wall, our protein, our folic. Um this was the membrane. And then this one, it was like DNA RNA stuff, nucleic acids. So that's what those numbers are representing. Uh we'll come back to those in a moment. So that's what those numbers are representing, uh, we'll come back to those in a moment. Uh, so next are our antivirals. For our antivirals, uh, the ones that I will want you guys to be aware of, the only ones that are in your study sheet. I know we talked about more in um. Uh, the lecture itself, but the ones that the study sheet talks about, it's gonna be Tamiflu. And I'm sure you guys know that Rolenza works the same way as Tamiflu, but this um is going to inhibit the action of. Neuraminidase. I'm sure I don't, don't have to tell you that this affects the flu, right, influenza, it's in the friggin name, that's not a trick. Okay, um, that's nice, at least, that you would, would be able to recognize that pretty easily. What does it affect? Neuraminidase, neuraminidase, what that does. Just FYI. Allows for um, basically. Entry and budding. Of the virus particles. As well as breaking down mucus. So they can get into like their tissues a little bit better, to infect more easily. So Tamiflu is going to prevent that, so neuraminidase, so that's what neuraminidase does. So there's your Tamiflu, um, the other one it talks about is acyclovir. If you see veer at the end of something, that treats viruses one hundred percent of the time, okay? You don't even need to know what it does, this is a pretty broad use, um, uh, antiviral. Whether we're using it to treat um hepatitis C or whatever, but this is just a broad use antiviral, so I'm not gonna go into any detail with it. Um, and then, uh, we do have a third group that I would just want to be aware of, that this is stuff that can be targeted by. Antivirals, I'm not gonna make you know what the names of them are, but these are our HIV drugs. These are going to target things that are specific to HIV, um, this is going to be obviously. Reverse transcriptase. That's one enzyme that they have that lets them turn their RNA into the DNA, and then the DNA gets put into your genome. How does it put the DNA into your genome? It uses this enzyme called integrase or integrates, however you wanna say it. So that's another target, and then there's one last target with HIV called protease. What HIV does, it makes a protein basically in one long string. But it needs it in parts, so protease comes and clips it into the parts that it needs to assemble it into the virus. So we can target that as well, so there's three things we can target with HIV that are associated specifically with HIV. Um, just be aware that that's how that works, so there's three things you need to know for the antivirals. Alright, um, the next thing that I have is. Let me try to set this up so it doesn't turn off, this is getting annoying, uh, the anti-fumbles. Um, this one's a pretty easy one, I'd be aware that's, uh, first we have amphotericin B. Which is like a specialist drug, it's like the next line of defense, um, it happens to be a macrolide. You don't need to know that, but it is, so um, that's a macrolide. But then we have other drugs in the anti-fumbles that have like a whole category that end in azole. Now examples um would be um myconazole or fluconazole, those types of drugs, azole. Um, these drugs are anti-fumbles typically, now, we have one exception. So our one exception. We'll come to it in a moment. Will be um. And we're gonna get to that, but that is uh gonna be a protozoa. But, so they have these two, if it, if it ends in azole, it's probably an anti-fumble, and then you also need to know amphotericin. Uh, next one, we have the. Anti- protozoa drugs. Um, the first one is going to be quinine. And its derivatives. Like chloroquine, for example, with a N in quine. Um, this is to treat malaria specifically. So quinine, treating malaria, and then number two. Uh, that's going to be our friend that we just mentioned in the last one, which was metronidazole. This is an amoebicide. So it kills amoebicide, it kills amoebas, um, it's also used um to treat. And aerobic bacteria infections. Like C. diff or something, things that really can't live in oxygen environments, just FYI, that's a thing to know about metronidazole. So quinine based drugs and metronidazole for that one. Uh, then our last group is going to be the. Anti- health helmets, so the terribly written, but you guys know what I'm trying to write, anti-helmants. Drugs, um, the two that you need to know for our exam will be. Prozac, quantle. And ivermectin. Which is what my little pup over here just had his last treatment of, is ivermectin, like his little heart ones. He's clearly doing just fine being a little terror. Um, yeah, so uh, that's that, so down here in this portion, we have just the three, two, two, two. Which is pretty easy, so um, three, two, 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 this will be the virus. Fear, fun, pro, hell. So um, that's how, I mean, if you can remember the number sequence and then in the layout of it, but that's. I don't know how you guys like to study it, so it's up to you, but this is a way that I would remember. From myself, how many I need to know for each section, and remind myself of that file I'm studying it, it's not necessarily something you need to recall that way for the test, but. Helps me keep it organized when I'm studying, so I know, okay, from remembering all of the anti-helmants, how many did I knew, know, need to know, okay. Right, that's gonna be two, you know, so I'm not missing something if all I know is prozac, quantle, and ivermectin. So that's how I divide that up, up to you guys, however you guys wanna work it. But um, if you can remember, sorry, I didn't lose, there was nothing about that. If you can at least remember um, the five groups for the bacteria. And then remember that there are viruses, fungi, protozoa, and helmets, that's a great place to start as far as trying to remind yourself. Of the different things that you need to uh remember for these chapters, what are you doing? He's uh, he's right here, and I know you can't see him cuz he's a black dog, and he's like in. Over here, but he's there, he's looking over the couch at you guys, right? Um, so this, that's chapter twelve, and I believe that's all I wanted to go over with chapter twelve, do you guys? Oh, no, no, there's some more, there's some terms, let's do it, let's add another page, shall we? So for chapter twelve. And the concepts. We already talked about how antibiotics are for bacteria, so that should already be something you know, um. Something else that I know that we already know is going to be Kirby-Bauer. So this is going to be antibiotic. And specifically antibiotics, antibiotic. Susceptibility. Put the discs down on the lawn that you made, grow it, and see how big that zone of inhibition is. You can use that zone of inhibition to determine how susceptible your organism is. Again, I'm not really going over that that much in this talk, because I know that you guys are already familiar with this and have already gone over it. Um, so I'm gonna touch on that again, if you do need to touch on it again, you know, go ahead, do you? Alright, so next we have this concept of selective toxicity. But we are selecting to be um harming. The bad guy. Uh, but we are safe for the host, the good guy, the human. That's the gist of what selective toxicity is about, be toxic to the bad pathogen, uh, but not to the human, yeah. So it's not, it's a term you need to be aware of, it's not a complicated one, though, to understand. Um, another one that we had was therapeutic index. Which I feel like pretty closely relates to that concept behind selective toxicity, what do you want, dude? You don't want to be up here? No, okay, whatever, um, anyways, therapeutic index. This is going to be dealing with um, the amount of the drug that would be toxic. As a ratio. How do we wanna look at that, uh, to the amount. Of the drug that is effective. To treat the disease, so if the amount that you need in order to treat. If the amount that you need to treat the disease is pretty close to what you need, uh, what, what would be causing problems. You know, um, side effects or something. Then um. Then yeah, it'll be dangerous, right? So you want to have as much disparity there as you can, you don't wanna risk somebody having harmful side effects. Um, from having the antibiotic, right? That would just make no sense. You're trying to treat somebody's disease and they're having these side effects as a result of taking that medication, it doesn't make any sense, so. Therapeutic index, the ratio of the amount of the drug that would be toxic to you versus the amount. That actually works uh against the infection itself, so that's that one. Then we have superinfection. Where essentially you take an antibiotic and you have killed um. All of your biota, your normal biota, your biome. And then your survivors. Will overgrow in its place. Which is what we see if you take an antibiotic, um, and you harbor naturally ostridium difficile, C. diff. Um, that would overgrow and create that um colitis associated with that, or um, take an antibiotic. Um, and uh, to treat maybe bacterial vaginosis, killing all of the bacteria, and then the yeast could. Grow over everything, so that's superinfection, and then we have intrinsic. Versus acquired drug resistance, so let's just say drug. Resistance. Um, intrinsic. This means you have to be able to resist. The drug that you make. Remember that a lot of these drugs come from like bacteria or fungi. That actually make these as defenses in their environments, if, you know, uh fungus that makes penicillin, which we know fungus does make penicillin. Um, if it makes penicillin, it has to be able to be resistant somehow to penicillin, um, that's intrinsic drug resistance. Whereas, um, acquired. Um, you didn't have it because you made it, you had to get it uh as a result. Of uh, you know, obtaining it from someone or some other cell, right? Um, so you acquired it, that's pretty self-explanatory, but, and when you do that, those resistance genes, we call them R factors. And remember, those can come from uh those three different ways of horizontal gene transfer. So conjugation. Which uses the sex pilus. Uh, alright, conjugation, um, transformation. Remember this one we learned about in the lab, we actually did the simulation of it, the competent. Cells uh pick up. Outside or exogenous. DNA. Uh, and then the last one, which people often forget about is. Transduction. Which is transfer of genes uh via phage. So whenever, whenever the phages um infect bacteria, the temperate ones can insert their um genome into the bacterial genome. And um, carry genes like with, for resistance and stuff with them, so these are the ways that you can get drug, drug resistance, so those are acquired. Getting your R factors, um, and. Okay, um, one last little bit, um. I'll add a page for this one, just so that we don't have to worry about it. How? Can? Drug resistance. Work, so this is some, one of the things that's talked about in that uh study sheet. As well, so first, um, maybe you get genes that code for enzymes. That inactivate, oh, are you kissing me? Okay. That drug. Um, we could have um inhibition. Or decrease. In the uptake. Or the permeability, which means the ability of the drug to get into the cell. Um, the third one, we can actually literally eliminate the drug when it enters the cell. Um, number four, we can decrease. The um, whatever mechanism the drug gets into the cell, it usually is like a lock and key mechanism also. So one of the things that we can do is decrease. Um, basically, the lock that the drug would fit into, drug being the key, um, the lock that it would fit into. We can change the shape of it, so it doesn't bind as well, so decrease um, the ability for it to binding onto it. Or its affinity for binding onto the, whatever the lock is. Uh, number five would be um. Altering a metabolic. Pathway, so this is uh gonna be most uh obvious with folic acid synthesis, because if you go. X to Y to Z, to A to whatever, um, each of these is a step. And uh, your drug maybe attacks the enzyme that works here and inhibits this step. So maybe now instead of going X to Y, X will go to F, and then that will go to D, and maybe then that'll go to Z. And so we would, can subvert that whole process altogether, so developing a whole new way of approaching. The metabolic pathway that your drug was blocking, so those are the different ways that those drugs can work. Um, so that is chapter twelve. Um, it's just you guys on here. Um it's just you guys on here on two, three. Okay, just the five of you. Um, oh, it says eight. It's just not showing everybody is why. Oh yeah, here we go. Here's everybody else. Um, so it's just you guys, the eight of you. Do you guys want me to go over chapter seventeen or you want to stop here at uh eleven and twelve and we could do seventeen and eighteen with the big review? I don't know what you guys wanna do. You have any preferences?
If you have time, if we can go over it, please.
Yeah, I have time, so we can go ahead and do that. Um, yeah. Okay, so let's do chapter seventeen. You are heavier than we look, dude. So chapter seventeen, and I know that Monday, Wednesday people, you guys have already done chapter eighteen. Um, well, I said Monday, Wednesday people, my Monday, Wednesday uh morning people, my online folks, I'm sure you guys, you're gonna take it at your own pace. I'm not judging, believe me. So um you guys have already done eighteen, though. Uh it's not, most guys have looked ahead, those of you who are on Tuesday, Thursday. Chapter eighteen's not a big deal. Like, there's a couple things that might be newish concepts, but most of it's just using what we already learned about to diagnose things, so it's not too bad, but so it shouldn't be too bad a review once we have the actual big review. Um but anyways, chapter seventeen is dealing with uh immune system problems. When the immune system goes wrong, right? So immunopathology. Um that's going to be the study of diseases that are um, the diseases related to the immune system in general. So we have divided this chapter up basically into two uh main sets of of uh area. Can you just lay here, please? Why do you have to move so much? Don't even need that. Alright, uh hyper versus hypo, right? That's how we looked at it and that's how we're gonna go through it. Um this way as well. So hyper being an increased uh reactivity of our immune system for whatever reason. We went through four types. Uh we had type one, I wanna give us some space to work here. Type two. Three, and then type and we'll get to hypo, I'm through that. But um to start with hyper, so increased, type one, this had to deal with uh allergic, right, allergic sensitivities. So we broke this down as atopic which was local. Um, or anaphylactic. Which was systemic. And here we are talking about a reaction either to certain parts of the body or any system of the body such as the skin versus systemic being throughout the entire body. So those are our terms that we wanna be aware of in relation to that. Um, the general idea here, we have um, this is related to IgE. That's the antibody associated with that. Um and all of these three are associated with antibody. Whereas type four was so mediated. Okay, anyways. Um, remember, right? Essentially, what is happening here is you have production of this IgE antibody in response to dander or whatever it is, your inhalant, your contactant, your injectant. Um your ingestant, those are the four groups that you could have. Um anyways, uh that IgE that is produced in response to your allergen uh will bind with that mast cell. And act as a sort of receptor on that mast cell. When the mast cell with the IgE on its little outside encounters the allergen, it releases its contents. And that was histamine and things like that, that are gonna form the allergic response, um bronchoconstriction, um vasodilation, all that stuff that's related to allergies. So um you're heavy, but you're small at the same time. So this is uh what's gonna be going on in the actual uh the body itself. And remember, you can react to things that could be ingested, injected contacted or inhaled. Um, so these are the, the four kinda things that you could have allergic responses to. Um what else would say? And how would you be treating all this? Just so that you guys are aware, these are things that you wanna be aware of. Um yeah, you can treat this, um let's say treat with uh um I just wanna say adrenaline. Which is the same thing as epinephrine. Just depending on how you're looking at it in terms of body. Or you could have an antihistamine. I know I'm a barrier brother barking. Um, or we could have desensitizing. In which case we would want to generate IgG, not IgE to the allergen. So that it binds with the allergen and uses it all up so that the IgE and the mast cells can't. So small. Um, so that's the idea of how you could treat those medically, other than, you know, avoiding it. Uh yeah, we mentioned a little bit about steroids, uh preventing the generation of the IgE as well, but that's in your paper, so don't worry about it. So that's the idea with type one, the allergies. Remember that allergic rhinitis, allergic rhinitis, rhino, your nose, itis, inflammation. If it's allergic, it's gonna be type one. And that's atopic because it's just in your nose. Asthma is just in your respiratory system. It's not systemic, but it is still type one. Um eczema, it's all in the skin, but it's not systemic. Um anaphylaxis, that's the only one that is systemic. Alright, so type two. Type two, this is the uh blood type related reactions. This could be um either ABO related or RH related plus or minus. So if you're A positive versus A negative, that sort of stuff. So these are the blood related ones. This is usually associated with IgG. Do you want down? You're acting weird. You never can decide. Um anyways, so these are gonna be uh IgG related. Uh remember that these are related to sugars. Oh, shoulder pain. Um sugars that are on the presence that are present on the red blood cells. So you could have the A type of sugar on the surface, the B type of the sugar on the surface, or you could have neither of these, just the foundational aspect, and that would give you the O. Um and you can have a combination of A and B. So your blood types could be A, B, A, B or O. Those are the four blood types. And remember that O being the foundation, everybody can receive it. And then um if you are AB, you can receive any of the blood types. I'm not right today. This is a C. So that makes O the universal donor. And AB the universal recipient. Okay? Um there was something else that I wanted to say. Oh, right, we're by the RH group stuff. Um if you, the thing we talked about specifically with regards to RH group, so either you have this RH marker, which is resis is what it stands for. The resus factor, but either you have the RH factor or you don't have it. If you don't have it, uh anybody can receive that, right? It's like the foundational. If you do have it, you can only uh pos- positives can receive positives, negatives can't receive positives. This negative see positive as foreign. So that's the how the RH group works. Um resus group. The thing that we talked about the most in the lecture is gonna be uh the uh hemolytic disease of the newborn, right? So if you have an RH negative mother and she is pregnant for the second time um with an RH positive baby. Now, it's important that it is the second, because the first one, you're just getting desensitized. You got exposed to RH. You made antibodies to RH because you saw it as foreign, but that took time for your body to react to it. And um also it took time for you to get actually exposed to it. Part of that has to do with um the placenta and blood and all that uh being, being transmitted between the mother and the baby. It's kind of a complicated deal, but uh basically the idea is you don't get it right away the first time that you see this. The second time, however, you've already got those antibodies in your repertoire. They've already been activated. And just like whenever we said, we bring in somebody with the measles into your classroom, um and you, your body will immediately start cranking out antibodies to protect you from that. Because you've seen it before and you would never know you're exposed to it. That's what the mother will be doing in response to her second RH positive baby, RH positive fetus. Um so the RH negative mother uh is pregnant with her second RH positive fetus. Um antibody will attack the RH positive fetus. And then that will create the hemolytic disease of the newborn. Right? So hemolytic, hemoblood, lytic, lysis breaking open. Um so this will lead to um death of that child, um lead to stillbirth and and that sort of stuff. So that's why we give Rogam. Rogam, um given about how it through the pregnancy will bind up with um the antibodies that the mother might be making um and keep it from attacking the baby. So that's how that would be. So that would be Rogam. Alright, so that is type two. Type three, moving on, this can be associated with IgG or IgM or IgA. These are like our typical bread and butter antibodies. IgA, remember, that's going to be associated with your mucous membranes. Um IgG is like your um class switch, um the hard worker. I have the, the big guy. Antibodies, and this is just your first response antibodies. So it could be any of these three in type three, but basically you will have antibody binding up with its appropriate antigen. This could even be after you clear the infection, or it could be during, but no matter what, you've got antigen binding up with antibody. And that uh leads to formation of these immune complexes. These immune complexes of antibody and antigen kind of all stuck together, they will get stuck basically in your um endothelium, in the cells of your uh blood vessels and tight spaces like um uh your joints and s- let's say get, they get stuck in tight spots. And when that happens your neutrophils, your most numerous white blood cell, your neutrophils will come and um start attacking thinking that there's war going on, right? It's, there's a war going on. So neutrophils attack. This causes damage to the surrounding tissue. Right? So um if this were to be doing, like we said in class, into like your joints leading to inflammation in your joints whenever these things get stuck in locations like that, rheumatoid arthritis, right? That can lead to inflammation in those joints. Um if we see something like this happening due to um capillaries in the face being um disrupted, burst, red uh from this similar sort of thing, getting stuck in there. Um that would be a sign of lupus. It's one of the symptoms of lupus, right? Uh the one that we talked about in the book in the book, in the lecture, like as if most of us ever even looked in the book. And the thing that we talked about in the lecture was uh what they call acute acute post staphylococcal, streptococcal, sorry. I wasn't reading it. Strep, post streptococcal, I'm just writing strep. Um because this next word. Anyways, the complexes get stuck in the kidneys. That's what this is referring to here. When the complexes get stuck in those little vessels where, you know, waste exchange occurs in the kidneys, now we're causing kidney damage whenever those neutrophils come and attack in those areas. So that's what that whole uh nephritis, itis, always being inflammation, right? Glomerulonephritis. Um this is, the glomerulus is part of your kidney, nephritis, neph- nephropart, that's the kidney itself. So anyways, you'll have inflammation in the kidney that can lead to kidney damage and be pretty severe as a result of it. So it's just antibody and antigens sticking together. You need quite a lot more antigen um in type three than you do in type one. Type one, you just need all enough to trigger the response of the IgE um cascade happening with your mast cells and releasing histamines and all that. When we're dealing with type three, you have to have enough of the antigen in order to actually have this buildup um happening to, to cause enough inflammation for it to be an issue. So yeah, alright, uh type four, the last of our hypersensitivities. Type four, uh this is dealing with cell-mediated immunity, but this is also known as a delayed type hypersensitivity. This is relating, so we said cell-mediated, this is easy enough, it's cell-mediated. You have two sides of your immune system, really. Um not to talk about innate, but once you switch to the specific immune system, you have the B cell side and the T cell side, right? The B cells make the antibodies, the T cells, their cells are actually doing the work. Either your helper giving signals or your cytotoxic going out and killing infected cells, right? The helpers are CD four, the killers are the CD eights. So this cell-mediated, this is dealing with your T cells. In the delayed hy- type hypersensitivity, it is delayed because your T cells, when you have your memory T cells, they need to multiply before they can actually do their work. So when you have a plasma cell, there's a B cell making antibody and you activate those memory cells, they can just start cranking out antibody. Yes, they can multiply too to make even more, but they can just start cranking it out right away. Uh whereas if you are dealing with the T cells themselves, it's different. It's different because those it's different. It's different because those memory cells, we only have a few of them that we stored from our last exposure. Um, that's not enough to fight the fight, right? So we have to multiply those guys out in order to actually go out and fight the fight. It's still faster because we can just multiply them out as opposed to going through the whole selection process and the activation process and all of that would involve the first exposure. Sometimes taking so long, um, you didn't uh, even have a reaction by the time that, you know, it's it's said none. But your second response will be faster, a couple of days for the T cells though, okay? Um, so it's, it's like what I said to some of you, um, if your first very, very first time that you saw poison ivy, um, I'm assuming most of you are allergic to it. My ex-husband was not uh, allergic to poison ivy. He could freaking roll around in the stuff and not get rash, which was nuts to me, but um, most of us are allergic to it. The probably the very, very, very first time that she touched it, uh, you probably didn't even know it because you probably didn't get a rash the first time. However, the second time that you touched it, I bet you know about poison ivy if you've gotten it before. So um, that would have been the second exposure. You were already sensitized, but um, poison ivy is a contact dermatitis. It's associated with type four response, so. Anything that is like that, that has like the weeping blisters associated with it, the damaged actual tissue on the surface as opposed to an a- a- true allergic type one allergic response, you'll only just get hives. You won't see the damage there. These ones where we actually get these blisters associated with it, um, that's going to be the type four typically. It usually takes a couple of days to respond. Um, another one that you guys are familiar with that we talked about, um, I said P P D. This is a P, I promise. P P D or tuberculosis skin test. Here, they're waiting to see if your body has ever made any T cells to tuberculosis before. Because if you respond within a couple of days by having a, you know, welt or um, a hive essentially developed as a result of getting that little injection under your skin, if it does welt up and you have a reaction there, it means you had T cells already there in your memory that is being reacted by the presence of this little bit injected under your skin. That would mean that you have either been exposed to tuberculosis somehow. It's possible that you maybe took medications and you got cleared of it. Um, good on you for taking that nine months worth of medications. Um, but yeah, it could be that, or it could be you have latent tuberculosis and you don't know it. Or it could be maybe you got um, a vaccination for tuberculosis and the much, much more rare scenario is that you've gotten one of these skin tests before and actually developed a response to it from the skin test itself. Not common, but it can happen. So, um, right, uh. There's one, I guess, uh. The other one would be uh, related to Yes. Do you want to take them with you?
Okay, you want to come with me?
spaghetti.
Nope, he just wants to chill.
Uh. Graft rejection. Um, so this is anytime that you would be getting, getting a graft from somebody else. You're going to always accept your own skin graft, right? You're not going to attack that. If you have an identical twin, you have the exact same genetics, therefore your M H C one markers, your H L A markers should be the exact same as well. Um, but if you get it from somebody else, you risk those M H C markers being different. So whenever it's, you know, saying that it's holding up, uh, I'm holding up, you know, fidget spinner. Always there's a fidget spinner. You guys are so lucky that you get to see me play with these so often. You hold, have you been at home, man? Uh. Uh, yeah, so normally M H C would be saying, okay, I have a virus. See, this is what uh, proves it. You know, come and kill this cell that's holding this, um, so that, and you know, we're, we aren't living with the virus inside of us. We can't spread it to our neighbors. And that's what it normally does. Uh, recognize the stuff that inside of the cell. However, when it's not doing that, it will just be sitting there like this, presenting nothing, just chilling. In your body, it's fine. Your body sees M H C with nothing in it and says, oh, you have nothing in it, not going to react to this. You take my kidney out, put it into your body. My kidney cells, all cells have M H C one because any cell can have a virus. So they're just chilling like, oh, this is great. I'm just living my life as a kidney cell, whatever. Then your body comes along, sees my M H C kidney, you know, doing this, doing nothing and sees it as, I know you're M H C one, but you'll look wrong, so I'm going to start the whole process of getting rid of you. So that is a type four response, rejecting your graft. So graft rejection. Um, and here it is talking about the different types of grafts that you can have. I'm going to scroll this one down. Um, you can have uh, allo graft. Wow, I don't know why I drew that so far away, but anyways, allo grafts are um, from another person. Uh, auto is self. Uh, what do they call the ones that were, yeah, ISO? ISO is identical twin, which may as well be self. Um, they're almost indistinguishable, right? But it is a whole other person. You would never know it. And then um, zeno. Which is another species. So these are the different kinds of grafts. Um. When you are rejecting your grafts, this can be a graft versus host, which this is the more obscure one. Or host versus graft. So look at it this way, if it says graft versus the host, that means the graft is attacking the host. What the heck does that mean? How could someone's kidney attack the host? It can't. That's not what's happening. What's happening is you get bone marrow. The bone marrow has lymphocytes in it. That's where your fricking lymphocytes come from. You got donated bone marrow. Um, I give you my bone marrow. It has my lymphocytes in it. You get your transfusion, you had your, um, you know, your leukemia and now this is saving your life or whatever. And um, but my lymphocytes start developing and they see your M H C on your, just every cell in your body chilling as foreign and just start attacking your body, basically as a whole. So that graft versus the host. Okay, so that's obscure. That's the weird one. The normal one that we always talk about, um, my kidney chilling in your body. I donate my kidney to you. It's just chilling. Your body sees it as foreign and attacks it. Um, that is host versus the graft. Okay, so that's the, the usual way. So we can look at it that way. And this graft would be like bone marrow. And remember why it's important that it's bone marrow is that it is stem cells. That will lead to the development of lymphocytes from the bone marrow. Um, that happens in your normal body, your normal body, here, uh, regular bone marrow, uh, but your cells look like your cells. My cells would look like my cells in your body, so that would be a problem. So that's how that would work. Uh, let's see, let's see, let's see. I think that's all I want to say about those. Um, sorry. Inside of page. So that was our hyper. Type one through four. Remember type one, two and three are antibody related. Type four is T cell related, so cell mediated. Um, type one, I G E allergies. Type two, I G G, that's going to be um, blood type related, A B O or R age. Uh, type three, immune complexes, I G M, I G G or I G A. And then type four, T cell, um, cell mediated. So we had the grafts, we had the um, contact dermatitis and similar reactions like that. Um. But yeah. Uh, in skin test, that's right. So moving on, uh, let's uh, come to full chapter seventeen. Uh, we will mention a little bit about autoimmunity. This could essentially be any of those types of hyperactivities that we just talked about. This could be anywhere from type one up to four, any of them. Um, it could be a local response or systemic. An example of the local might be um, yeah, uh, type one diabetes. Um, where we have our immune cells attack pancreas cells. Alright, and then systemic all over the body. An example would be lupus. They actually literally call it systemic, right? So um, lupus, systemic lupus erythematosis. So, uh, yeah. So it could be all over the body, it could be certain areas of the body. What exactly is going on? Your immune system is seeing yourself as foreign for whatever reason. Maybe um. Maybe it's due to uh, infection that you responded to um, triggering reaction to self or because it is looking similar to your own cells, which we call molecular mimicry. A lot of these are tied to some sort of infection, it seems like anyways. Um, it's been hard to kind of prove that, but we think there is a link to if you had X disease and responded to this, that you're more likely to have, you know, Y thing happen. I actually had, I don't think she's on here right now, one of my students in my late class come up to me after the lecture for this, telling me that um, she has a hypersensitivity to strep. She carried strep as just a carrier, which isn't unheard of. People can carry strep. And anyways, she um, developed a response um, to it whenever they had given her anti- antibiotics for something. And she found out she was a carrier for strep and that caused her to react to the strep. And now since it's part of her body, she has now developed psoriasis as a response to um, that whole reaction. So that's a, that's a type of autoimmunity then as a result of that, her carrying strep. So it's pretty interesting. It's, it's pretty rare also. Um, but stuff like that happens. Unfortunately, we think that this has to do with uh, that hygiene hypothesis, us living in such a clean society nowadays and our gut biome not being trained um, properly by our environments and therefore not training our immune system properly. So they think that's what it's related to. Um, so that's part of the whole deal, but um. Let's see, let's see, let's see. So that's pretty, that much it for the autoimmunity, that's fine. Let's move on to the deficiencies. Alright. Um, there's two different types that we have to know of the primary and the secondary. Primary is genetic defects. You've had it since birth. Secondary, you acquired it somehow. You got it after, sometime after birth. So uh, genetic defects, this would be things like what we mentioned was SCID severe combined. Let me not even try to write this. Severe combined um, immunodeficiency. Hey, why I can't really? I don't know what, oh, this pen, that's what the problem is. Okay, there we go. So SCID is severe combined immunodeficiency. Um, if it's X late, remember men only have one X chromosome, so if they have a uh, genetic defect in with that one X chromosome, they're going to express it. They don't have any other X to sort of compensate for that. So that's how that would end up working. Um, anyways, that's an example of genetic uh, immunodeficiency. Genetic immunodeficiencies can be related to um, B cells, um, so in which case they'll call it A gamma globulinemia. She typed that one out. Um, A globulinemia, so that means that they don't make any um, antibodies. Right, so that's all that they have to worry about. However, if you are affecting the T cell line, this can be more severe. Why? Because the T helper helps both sides, right? It helps activate, helps both B and T cell activation. So if you affect the T cell line, you're also kind of affecting the B cell line, which is why we have such a severe effect going on with H I V, which is secondary um, immunodeficiency because you acquire that one. But when you get AIDS, you're mostly affecting your T helper cells and they can't help activate B cells. They can't help activate the T cells. So then um, you have effects from diseases that could be affected both sides of it. So it kind of is a rough way to go. Uh, with the secondary, uh, like we had said before, H I V, H I V is not itself an immunodeficiency, right? This is going to be uh, AIDS. It develops into AIDS. Acquired immunodeficiency syndrome. And AIDS is the immunodeficiency. Um. Anyway, so that's basically going to be affecting your T helper cells and like we said, activates the anti-cell side that causes problems there. Um, other things you can have uh, leading to secondary would be cancers. That would be um, affecting the, the whole lymphatic system. Like leukemia, like a, a thymus tumor, um, like uh, you know, B cell, plasma tumors and stuff like that. So those types of things can affect the function of your immune system. Um, that would be acquired. You don't have it from birth. Um, you could have like radiation treatment and that sort of stuff. Um, and metabolic disorders can lead to immunodeficiencies as well. Uh, so, so treatment for cancers or the cancers themselves, um, and then certain viruses that you have can lead to, to that too. So that is it for chapter seventeen. Uh, so we should have made it through. I don't know how we have an extra page in here, but whatever. Uh, we should have made it through all of those chapters, uh, eleven, twelve and seventeen. Does anybody have any questions for me at this point? Oh. Cool. Alright, so uh, it is five forty-five, so I'm going to go ahead and kick it. I hope you guys have a great evening. I'll see you uh, Tuesday, Thursday, folks tomorrow. Um, I don't, just FYI, I know that some of you are my Tuesday, Thursday folks and some of you aren't, but those of you who are, we don't have media for tomorrow for our lab, so it's going to be a nice short day in lab. Um, so great, that's great news, I guess for you guys. I'm not particularly that happy about it, but what can you do? So, um, yeah, let me know if uh, thank you, thank you. Um, let me know. Glad to have you guys, glad you guys showed up and I'm sure people will watch the recording even later, so email me if you have any questions. Um, other than that, I'm going to head out and I'll see you guys later.
Thank you, super helpful.
Alright, bye guys.